We'll start with new items of discussion, the 2017 liquid fuels distribution. Pam, you want to go over this with us again?
I do. Last week, I presented distributions with and without a project earmarked. And we had discussed not earmarking that project. Well, Judy had asked about the admin fees, and I did find out that we can take 10% of what is allocated to us from the state. So it would have been about $14,000. So I redid my allocations, putting in the admin fees, taking out the project, because they can use the Act 13 monies for any of their emergencies that come up. And still allocating $140,000 or increasing it to $155,000, which would still leave us a little bit of money in our checking account. So once the decision is made, then, you know, we can put the resolution on the public meeting as to what the allocations will be.
So how much were you billing before as a point of reference?
$140,000 is what our allocation was.
Yeah, but what were you billing at the time?
$259. She was billing hours where.
Okay. So this is going to be great.
Yes. Quite an increase.
Does that represent our liquid fuel receipts for one year, 10% of them?
Is there any way to go back and recoup what we've lost?
No.
What I've heard is that this is supposed to be, or at least on the Keystone Report, yesterday I saw that this is going to be the worst year yet for liquid fuels.
Well, I reduced it by 5% for the estimate of what we're going to get in '17. The other thing with liquid fuels is our bridge inspection. That contract has been an eight-year contract. It is due to expire the end of 2017. And there's two different ways to go about it. Both are electronic. Currently, when Stiplin McGrath inspects our bridges, they send an invoice. We pay the invoice out of liquid fuels. I send the state an invoice for their 80%, and we pay 20%.
You say "our" bridges, you mean the township's bridges?
Yes.
Well, there are independent bridges, yeah.
Well, the townships are the gap.
Within the edge of the county, they're...
Using that 80%. And with getting allocations just twice a year, you know, you have to keep some money in there to pay your bridge inspection invoices. One of the ways to do it is that PennDOT takes care of it, and then they reimburse you only, they'll take out your 20% out of your allocation. They will pick who the inspector is for the term of the contract. It's not done by cost. Then if the cost comes in, and we think it's a little high, they will go to bat for us. If we are not satisfied with the cost, they'll go to the number-two choice. But they usually do pick the incumbent, you know, if they've done a good job and, you know, so we don't need to make that choice right away, but by the end of the year or mid-year this summer, we have to start the process.
Okay.
You said you were charging $250, whatever it was. What's it going to go to now?
About $14,000.
$14,000?
Yes. I was taking, I was keeping track of the time that I work on liquid fuels multiplied by my hourly rate. And because everything is computerized, it does not take me that long anymore.
Yeah. But now the county will get $14,000?
We can take 10% of what we get from the state.
So who's going to get less money then?
Nobody, really.
Everybody else.
Yeah, the portion that the county will receive will increase. The portion that everybody else will receive will decrease.
Well, that caused a right war.
At the same time, I think since we've been underbilling essentially, because we've not been considering other overhead and bookkeeping and stuff in the past, I don't really have a moral problem with this radical increase, at least for this year.
Working in the act, I believe, allows up to a maximum of 10% for admin fees. And Pam was strictly taking her straight-time hourly rate. She wasn't putting in any social security match, any other benefit costs or anything that go along with that. Additionally, the bank statements are reconciled in fiscal, no time for that was counted in there. Angela prints the checks that go out, no time for that. Denny's, the treasurer's office does the receipting of it when it comes in. Envelopes postage, she was doing flat-out per-hour rate for that stat. So we weren't recouping anything else across the board. So when you add in everything else that goes along with it, I think...
This seems justified.
Yeah.
That's good.
All right. Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Judy. Any more questions on that? This is on our meeting agenda for Wednesday, correct?
No. I'll need to know which way the, what allocation you want to go with the $140 or increase it to the $155 for 2017. And then I can do the resolution and put it on for Wednesday.
What do you recommend? What would you like to see?
The $155.
That's what I would go for.
Because we've been paying the $140, and that hasn't changed for three years, so...
Might as well give it to them and let them use it.
For at least one year, they'd have a bump.
Right. I agree. That sounds logical, too. All right. Employee Assistance Program Agreement for 2017.
We are seeing an increase of $1.17 per employee for 2017 from 2016. I am happy to say, though, that the county's use of the EAP has doubled.
Good.
So people are now, they are using it. You know, supervisors, you know, are reminding people that it's out there. You know, if people seem a little distant, you know, just reminding them that it's out there, and it is being used.
Great.
Well, good. That was pretty much the benchmark that I think Jeff had sent last year, saying that he'd like to see it double. He did that.
Yeah. And in fact, and why, I don't know, but for 2016, it was reduced. Human services usage is a little lower, and ours has increased.
We had a lot of conversation about beginning of the year. I'm helpful with that. Created some interest in it, so...
All right. Anyone have any questions on that? All right. Moving on to the fiscal amendments.
I think I sent an email around to everyone about errors that I had found when I was working on bringing the budget into the AccuFund system, just cells that had not rolled forward correctly. And then we also had salary changes that were approved in Salary Board for the hiring of two new law clerks that we needed to adjust the salary and benefits for. And the total of this weighs against the contingency, but it would be an increase in the overall budget for central booking of $556, an increase in EMA for $11,770. And all of these, when you look at the individual line items when the budget was prepared, these amounts were in the line items. It's just that they didn't total down right or total forward to the summary page correctly. So it's not adding or changing anything. It's just information that was overlooked. And then the change to the courts would be $2,342. That's representative of the approved salaries for the two new law clerks. And the net against that goes against contingency of $14,668. So those will be proposed amendments to the budget.
So the central booking and the EMA are the two where the numbers, like in the budget, didn't work out properly?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we don't have that on our agenda currently, Pam, to make those fiscal adjustments. Would you just do that during your report?
Well, it's amendments to the budget, and I think the commissioners have to.
Okay.
We should just do those quarterly, I mean, unless it looks like we're actually going to run over the line item. Because, I mean, these are, we're not going to run up, I don't need these until close to the end of the year anyway, right?
No.
So until we get close to that threshold, we wouldn't have to change it.
Okay. I guess my only point for changing them now is I'm sending out budget reports to the departments, and I would like their budgets, when they're bouncing their costs against something, to show properly in those areas.
So what would you suggest, quarterly or...?
I would suggest doing this...
As they come up?
This particular, these particular ones, I'd rather have done now, because we do have the law clerks here and on the payroll now.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'll put that on as a separate line item from the fiscal report.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds fine. Thanks, Judy.
All right. Capital budget items.
We had a couple of things come in at the end of last week that's going to change how I think we're going to want to spend that. And so I'm going to suggest that we put that off probably another two weeks.
Okay.
Do we have any pressing requests that you're aware of?
Pressing, no.
I mean, there are things that are ongoing, like we know...
We're right beside the commissioner's office. Anything that comes in on this, it's capital, goes right to you guys anyway. So it, in all truthfulness, if you've spoken to the departments about their capital projects, whether it's an IFI on the list or whether it's talk to us again next year, I really don't know that tying this list publicly to the list of items, we've already stated amounts out there for capital, we've got an overall capital budget.
Right. Yeah, I don't think there's any legal reason that we have to until it comes to point to actually sign a contract.
It was purely for the point of getting the budgets out to the department heads, and they've been asking if we've had capital approved. If you don't mind that I defer all of them to the commissioners when they want to discuss anything about capital, and I'll just go on with the other end of it, that's...
And honestly, if they're going to make a major, if they're going to make a capital request, is there a problem with them just coming to one of our work sessions and asking for it?
Yeah. Even at that, everything that was approved in capital was always said it was tentatively approved, because any last-minute catastrophe could change what you say you're allocating your capital to. So it's, you know, even approval, they still had to finally come to you before they initiated a project or a purchase or anything.
And the biggest outstanding thing at this point is still that boiler, and we don't know what kind of grants we can get for it. We're actively looking for them. Dan Glotz has really been spearheading that, or his department, rather. So until we get a number on that, the rest of this is just...
Yeah, there's a big tension after that. That's understandable.
All right. We'll move on to school resource officer. We've got an agreement from the school district's solicitor, was sent over to our solicitor. He sent it over to us for review. Hopefully, I don't know if any of you have read through this yet.
I haven't read it, but I want to listen to your feedback on it. I mean, it seemed like what we talked about.
Right.
Yeah, it's something I definitely want to take a closer look at. I just skimmed through it a couple of times, but I think that the issue has always been a question of liability and, you know, and also the overall costs, like how those are going to be handled.
Right. And overall costs, the school district is paying the county for the use of vehicles and personnel and such. But you write that liability question of if something happens, who foots the bill? And I know we had talked about some sort of a split, and I don't even see where that's listed on here.
Yeah.
And that's just a split on the, shall we call it an escrow key?
Yeah.
It does in Section 8 refer to that.
Yeah, okay.
So that section, I think we need to pay particular attention to. And also, well, all of the agreement, but that in particular. So, yeah, I think we all need to ask our solicitor any questions that we may have in regard to this at tomorrow's meeting, so he can all just understand it better.
Yeah, and I'd like to talk to the sheriff about this as well, just so that we have a clear understanding of what the person's responsibilities are to an extent. I think that the general practice of the officer is understood. I get concerned once you get into the weeds of, you know, what happens if something happens at the school, you know, if there's an investigation of some type, you know, who, you know, what are the responsibilities of the officer in that situation, you know, comparative to the administration of the facility and some other things.
That is touched on a bit here in Section 4. Maybe we want to look at that and maybe more clearly define it if you think something needs to be added or something.
Well, as long as everybody's on the same page, I guess, with how that's going to be handled. Because that's where I get, once you get into, you know, when something happens, you know, who's legitimately going to be responsible for how it's handled? You know, there's a lot of, I know just having talked with the DA and some other people that, once you get into the school, there are a lot of, you know, everything gets more complicated. So having, making sure that everybody understands that.
And I think it's important that we share the liability, because partly it's our responsibility, our sheriff's deputy's responsibility to be prudent, I suppose. But they wouldn't be in that environment if it weren't for the school district. So I want, I like the 50-50 kind of split, because it recognizes that we both have some skin in the game.
Is this anything that needs to be sure that is stated also in our insurance policy for liability with P comp?
You might want to review this, too.
Because I'm working on that renewal right now, and I, in all the different definitions of categories and things, I didn't see anything like this. Now, this could be uncovered under normal duties of the sheriff's department. I don't know, but I just want to be sure that we disclose this.
Sure.
It actually says that in Section 8, that we have to report this to our insurance provider.
Okay.
So I'll give you this contract, and you can review it. I have another copy.
Okay.
All right.
It is, it shouldn't probably affect much, because other counties do this. It's a fairly normal thing for a sheriff's department to do. But you're right, it definitely has to be disclosed. Thanks for thinking of that.
Okay. We don't have any more new items listed here. Must anyone else have anything new they want to bring up today?
Well, the one thing that I wanted to discuss was, the one thing I want to discuss was how you guys felt about the idea of retaining an engineer for the county, you know, over the course of the next year, in order to work on all of the various projects, capital projects that we're going to have going on between the boiler, you know, potentially the elevator and the jail and some other things. The county hasn't had like a contract with a, an engineer in the past, or at least not in a long time. Most municipalities have contracts with an engineer. Now, that's because they have a lot more, you know, physical work that they'd be done, you know, as far as, you know, bridges and roads and everything else. We're in a kind of a unique place where we're going to have over the next year, you know, a lot of different maintenance projects that are going to be pretty big. And rather than having to go out and bid and dig up engineers for every single project, I thought that it might be beneficial to just basically do it once, find one that we like, contract with them for the next year, and then have them do all the engineering work on all the various projects that we're going to require them. You know, that way we can, you know, and I think in some ways by doing that, it'll save us time and it'll save us money, just because they'll be able to come in and take a look at these projects and then, you know, kind of whittle away at all the extraneous things that can get charged, you know, as a part of a larger project, you know, and save us money that way.
Were you thinking that you wanted to put out a request for proposal or...?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, we would do it in conjunction with the maintenance department, obviously, like Matt would be heavily involved in it. But that we would, that we would come up with a list of kind of requirements, and then, and then put that out for a request for a proposal, you know, with regional companies, and then, you know, kind of review them and then find one that we really like, that we think is affordable, and it's going to, that has the credentials and the reputation to do the work that we need.
My only concern is getting into another situation where we have another bill to pay every month. So I guess if we put out a request for proposal, my suggestion, of course, might be, and we can certainly talk about this when we're creating that, is that it be, you know, project-based payment instead of, you know, a retainer fee or such.
That's fine with me. I think the point is just getting somebody on paper, on contract, so we don't have to go out searching.
Correct. I understand.
I totally agree with, you know, Commissioner Morrison on this, in that, yeah, the goal's not going to be to just have someone like sitting around, you know. Probably their first initial project, obviously, would be working with Matt and the boiler, you know, and getting engineering specs for that. We just had a pretty big maintenance meeting to discuss all the various issues in the county, and have to review other projects that are, you know, aren't huge, but they're big enough where really in order to make sure that we get, you know, get them done well, that an engineer takes a look at it and really gives us a detailed spec on how to set it up. So I totally agree with you.
I think it's a really good idea, and I know that in several of our meetings, that an engineer has come up. It's been like, well, we need an engineer. So I think it's a really good suggestion, and I think we should...
The other thing I was going to talk to you about in relation to that is, and we would work with Dan Glotz and Planning and Zoning, and Lori Dunlop and a few other people potentially, to talk about if we get the, if we get an engineer for the county, potentially have a part of their contract working with planning and zoning, just because they have had a need for engineers for various projects at different times. And they might be, it might be something where, because they're in a position too where they'll have to bid things out related to CDVG and some other stuff. Hey, I said it right.
Right there.
I always wanted to say CBGs. But anyway, CDVG and stuff down there, that's something that Lori Dunlop had brought up last year. And I thought, when we were talking about this with maintenance, that, yeah, and I brought it up with Dan, and Dan thought that there was some potential there. I think that we would make, or we would decide that based on our conversations on how we put the package together, that that could potentially be a part of it in order to solve another issue there.
Okay.
Sounds good. So you'll take point on putting out an RFP of some kind?
Oh, yeah, we, I'll talk to Matt when we have a regular maintenance meeting. And, you know, I guess we'll have a continued conversation about this at the work session.
Sounds good.
I think it'll be together.
All right. Any other new items?
I submitted four repository bids on my, that would be on the agenda.
Oh, good, good, here. They're on our meeting agenda for Wednesday.
For Wednesday?
Yeah. You want to talk about them now? Is there something that we should...
No, nothing. It's just typical repository bids that were submitted.
Okay. Yep, they're here, on Wednesday's agenda. There's four of them?
There's four of them, totally, yeah.
Is everything that's available for sale through repository, it's a list on the website?
Yeah.
I've never looked for it, so I would have no idea if it was or wasn't, but...
Because on date January 1st, I believe, or 2nd, and that's why we got such a high number.
I know this is kind of a maintenance project. Jeff, maybe this is something that needs to be engineered, the air handling?
Yeah. So that's a good example of one of the maintenance issues with...
So we can't approve this? The reason I brought it up was, we've been having issues with the air handling over the jail, you know, handler, whatever, the HVAC unit. And we got a quote to either replace it or try to maintain it. And it sounds like, from what our maintenance people are saying, it just needs to be replaced. And that's their, the professionals' recommendation as well. They gave a quote, the quote expired like last week, so I thought if we were going to approve it, we could still probably get it in. But I know they're getting annoyed with requoting and requoting and requoting us and never getting any quirk.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that the whole idea with this would be, this is something that we would want to get done.
Get done.
Get done.
That was months ago, yes. That was like a year ago, when they asked, would you please fix this before summer? And we didn't.
Right.
Well, that was with, yeah, that was specifically the sheriff's office.
Right. But the whole thing is, it's all one year, right?
Yeah. The administrative, the administrative section of the jail basically is not getting any air conditioning. And if we don't, that's part of the reason to get, in my opinion, to get the engineer in place and to do it within the next, I'm hoping, within the next month.
This is the...
So that we can then have them spec the jobs and get them working, you know, by spring, because there's a couple of projects like that where they're not as big, for instance, as the boiler, but they, they're big enough where they're going to be, they're going to need major work.
And yet small enough that it's irritating to try to go find an engineer for every little project.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, that one is one where they're going to actually move the system from the roof down to the ground, and as a result, there's some stuff that needs to be done to the side of the building. And so that's one of those things, again, where I don't necessarily feel comfortable always just going with whatever the agency that you bring in to just look at it, to do, you know, to put the stuff in. There may be some things to shave on costs that are...
Is this the only proposal we got on that?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah. Which is our hesitation.
Yeah.
And we can't technically put a bid packet together. We need the engineer to do that, so...
Yeah, I mean, what ends up happening is Rusty and Matt would get together and then put together like some specs based on their conversation with all the various groups that look at it or might do maintenance on that, and then could put that out, but then get into this place where even their scope of experience is limited. So, you know, somebody will come in and sell them a system, you know, and I think that the goal would be to get somebody in that has a lot of connections, that can, that knows a lot of different organizations, a lot of different setups, and then can find some that will, A, be more cost-effective, B, have a longer-term solution, C, just function better. We, through reviewing the maintenance setup in the county, there's a couple of situations where, you know, stuff was kind of done, you know, with a particular, you know, vendor, and, you know, everybody else that's ever looked at it and said, you really shouldn't have set it up that way, and you're going to have to replace it in X, Y, and Z period. And I think that really trying to avoid that and get as much technical work done at the beginning is very important.
If that's moved off the roof and to the ground, it wouldn't end up being moved to any place where it's going to cause any problems with whatever's coming down the road for the elevator. Is it?
Well, I mean, I suppose that would be, I know, but I suppose that would be part of the conversation.
Okay. Because I, you do, there was a thing with a pit and a firewall and whatever else, and I'm not even, I'm not even aware of where the elevator is, you know, if they're going to, I know when we did an elevator at our church, we had to have an additional outside room down in the ground.
Yeah, that's what they're talking about.
Okay.
And I did hear from Steve Sigman now that we're talking about that, so I'll share that with all of you.
I just didn't want to move this and then move it again because of the elevator, that's all.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right. I think that, you know, we're on to anything else that's new? If anyone else has anything. I just wanted to start off by saying that I appreciate Commissioner Edgelson's efforts into correcting the website issue with the form for the right-to-know. He got that corrected very quickly, and I appreciate that. And, you know, due to his efforts, I believe it's corrected and working well now. So the right-to-know submissions online are up and running. I don't, I haven't heard from any other constituents. I think we caught them all, so...
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
And Pam, got a couple of new ones. I grabbed one like the one last week, so it is, everything's functioning.
Good.
We got a couple of them, I think.
Got one yesterday.
Another right-to-know request?
Seems to be an uptake in line.
All right. Anyone have anything?
Well, last week I was on a business trip, so the only, besides calling in with having meetings, the only county work I did was on the operating agreement for workforce development, which my committee is drafting, and tomorrow is going to release to the overall board, and hopefully the workforce development board can review it for when, Friday's meeting. So Friday is my big meeting with them. I'll be focused a lot on that this week, on what to do for what... I'll be focused a lot on that this week, on what to do for workforce development going forward.
Right.
I don't think I, I did not have any board meetings last week except for the office commission and I don't have any coming up this week except for workforce development. The only other notable thing on the schedule that I'm aware of is Wednesday evening's election event, which Jeff knows more about than I do, I think.
Yeah, Wednesday night's candidate night, Lisa's done a fantastic job of putting this event together. I think that she's going to end up having more people than she's ever had to any events. She had well over 50 and she may get into the 60s, I think, by the time it's done. I had attended one that she was a part of years ago and it was at the, I'd say, extension office. And that had probably 20 or 30 maybe. And then the one that she did two years ago, I believe, or no, you know, I guess it'd be two years now when the commissioners are running, there's probably like 20, maybe 30 people there. This one's going to be really big and I think that really like to thank her for her hard work on it. She put together a really great packet of information. It's downloadable on the website and, you know, for anybody that's going to run for office, it's really, I really think it's going to be a great event for them. It's 6:30 on Wednesday.
Upstairs.
Upstairs in the Jackson courtroom. And she's baked some homemade cookies.
Up there.
There'll be coffee. Not that you'll need it because everybody knows how exciting the election law is, so.
Can I bring up one more thing on the finances? Denny and I talked about this last, the treasurer and I talked about this last week. And we're getting close to the point of needing our first draw from the tan. We definitely will be doing it sometime this month. And the bank also has contacted us because they knew that February was probably the month that we would first start drawing against it. So I'll check before Wednesday's meeting to let you know for sure. The other end of it, he and I, and I wish he was here, we've both talked about thinking that the county should probably look into doing an RFP for financial services for the main bank accounts for the county. We may not get any better than where we're at, but the bank that we are presently at with our general started dropping the hints that they're no longer going to be able to waive a lot of the fees that they have been waiving for us. Additionally, we have the employee charge cards, the few people around that do have charge cards. We are kind of running into some odd problems and situations with those. And we were kind of hoping we might be able to shop both of those and get them at the same place, which would make the payment process easier on those. I don't know what all you have to advertise for an RFP for financial services. We're basically looking for credit card and checking account services.
I think that, yeah, I think that's something that we would just basically collect information together, you know, with all the various services, you know, kind of bind it and, you know, come up with some financial data and then basically put it out and say, I mean, I think that we're, we've been evaluating every system we have, you know, stuff that's kind of been there for a long time. So I think that why not throw that in with everything else and see if we can, you know, fish for, you know, fish for the best rate.
We just came across one other problem on one of our accounts and that the conversion, considering all that had to be done, has gone pretty seamless. But we had a check that just couldn't get cashed the other day and we tried all sorts of things to it again and again. And here we found out the reason it couldn't be cashed was because somehow it got converted into a savings account when they did the conversion with the banks instead, which you can't write a check on a savings account, which is nothing on our end of it, but we were thinking we had to be doing something wrong here and kept looking at things. But we were just, I know we've been talking about the bank that we are with has been absolutely great and everything, but we do have a lot of accounts there that they have been very generous in waiving. Well, generous, they waived a lot of fees for us on the services that we did.
Yeah, I mean, generally we've been happy with them, so I mean, it's, I don't think it's a reflection of that as much as.
No, no, and like I said, if we shop it around, we may not get any better than where we're at. But if we're going to have to start paying fees, we might as well look to see if we could pay less in fees elsewhere.
So.
All right. Commissioner Edgelson, do you have anything?
I don't have anything else. I think we've gone over quite a bit, so.
I don't either. Guess we'll adjourn if anyone has anything. All right. Thanks for coming, everyone. No?